So, welcome to our Town Hall for July of this year. I'm Rick Stevens, President here at Christian Hospital. So, I like to start each Town Hall off with a mission moment. And so, this comes into a recent patient that came here to Christian Hospital. And she says, "I wanted you to know that I spent most of yesterday morning in the emergency room at Christian. I awoke to much pain in my left leg below my knee. I cannot really walk. My husband called 911 and I was taken to Christian Hospital Northeast as I requested. I thanked my EMS crew of Erin and Eric, who answered the call about 6:00 AM and tried to ease my fears as I was taken to the hospital. When I arrived, I was taken to a room and EMS got me ready for my nurse, James, who took vitals and made sure I understood what was next. I saw Kevin, who helped get me registered. I saw Jen, who tried to explain the plan for my care, and she discussed my pain. I had x-rays and then I had ultrasound performed by memory. All staff worked to address my concerns as best they could in their role. I thank all for their caring attitude. I realized that it is difficult to see so many persons with varying medical needs each day and also see each as an individual with concerns. My diagnosis was somewhat complicated in medical terms. As I now understand, it is a condition caused by a small clot in the varicose veins in my left leg below my knee. I'm headed to see my primary care doctor tomorrow to understand what is next to treat my condition. But I do so better understanding where I am now and what happened yesterday. That's important to me. I wanted to convey my firsthand account to you so that you know how important it is to address not just the medical conditions presented, but the person who needs the care. I was a person who received the care by caregivers who treated me both professionally and also personally. So, it's not often that I don't get something every week where individuals tell me about the great care that we're giving here at Christian. So, kudos to the team here, and I know that we will continue to give great care going forward. So, I want to start off the Town Hall to talk about the BJC Healthcare-St. Luke's merger. Some people have asked me about this particular merger and what does it mean? And so, we're in the discovery phase right now. We're in the due diligence phase right now. And so, Rich Lightwig, though I can share with you that Rich Lightwig, the current CEO of BJC, will be the CEO of the BJC Health System. This will be the new corporation that will come out. And this is also St. Luke's Health System in Kansas City, not St. Luke's Health or St. Luke's Hospital in Chesterfield. So, also, there'll be two divisions. It'll be BJC Healthcare in the East and then St. Luke's Health System in the West. And so, the name of the new company would be called BJC Health System. So, more to come. We're on track to end and close this new agreement, this new company, by the end of the year. So, more information to come when we come back with our Town Hall in the September-October timeframe as we go forward. So, with that, I'll stop right there and I will turn it over to Hillary Harris, our VP, our Chief Operating Officer, for her to give you an update.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Hillary Harris, the Chief Operating Officer, and I'm going to provide an update on a couple, a few topics today. One, our public safety and security. Two, workplace violence, and then an update on our construction. So, security is an important topic, I know, for everyone. And this week, the 18th and 19th, we had our Evolve Weapons Detection System installed in the emergency departments here at Northeast and at Northwest. This allows our public safety officers to really screen for and identify weapons that someone might have on their person and prevent them from coming into the emergency department. So, our public safety officers will be completing training on this over the next week and a half to really learn the machine, learn the process, learn the activities that they need to follow to ensure that they can safely use the machine and also lock up any weapons that they find. And then, we will officially go live with the Weapons Detection System on the 31st of July, or that week. We are excited because as a result of this equipment, we have added 18 FTEs to our public safety department that is going to be spread across both the campus here at Northeast and at Northwest. This will allow us to add additional patrols, so we'll have more officers walking around on foot, more driving patrols through the parking lots, that sort of thing, to ensure that we are keeping the environment safe. And so, you should expect and probably have noticed that you do see more officers walking around because we've been doing training, that sort of thing. One of the other things that we're doing, because we know that the car break-ins are increasing in the region, is we are adding, in the process of adding additional lighting to Northwest. We've already done that project here at Northeast in the parking lots. And it's important that we continue to park in employee spaces so that we can keep a better eye on employee cars. We also are, you know, working for those that have Kias and Hyundai's, just a reminder that, you know, using items like the club on your steering wheel is the way to help protect your vehicle. But all of us keeping things out of sight in our car, making sure our cars are locked is the added protection to prevent against break-ins. For workplace violence, we're focused in two areas. So, we're focused with our leader and staff education and then our nonviolent crisis intervention training. So, the first area with our leaders and our staff is really educating them on the use of a flag within Epic that helps to identify patients or family members who are exhibiting violent behavior. And what that does is allows us to better communicate from one shift to the next or one care provider to the next, to ensure that everybody is aware of what's going on. The other thing is, we heard feedback that the reporting process for staff was taking too long. It was too cumbersome. So, we listened to that and created a short form within our SIM system, our Safety Event Monitoring System, to ensure that we can do it in a much quicker manner. So, now, it's a short form. I've heard it takes about 30 seconds to fill out, and it gives you an opportunity to report that thing, those events. And this is important because that allows us to follow up and ensure all of the safety measures are in place to help prevent future events as we go forward. Our teams will be undergoing training at the end of this year, our education team, on nonviolent crisis intervention. This allows us to do de-escalation and to really help prevent any violent behavior. And so, the trainers are being trained at the end of this year and then in the beginning of 2024. We will first start with our emergency department staff, our ICU staff, our float pool, and our public safety officers. And then, we will put, our second phase will include our inpatient units and our ancillary And then, lastly, wanted to provide an update on our construction projects that we have going on. So, in our Town Halls in April, I shared an update about our EP lab, and we finished that in June, and it is up and running, and we are seeing patients in there every day. So, that's good news. Our sixth floor project, we are set to refresh the sixth floor, and we will be kicking that project back off. We had some, a hold on the project to make sure that we could ensure that we had the right infrastructure on the floor to support care of patients. And so, we will be starting that project up within the next month, and our goal is to be able to start doing construction in 2024. We started about two weeks ago, meetings with our planning, design, and construction colleagues, planning for our CSPD and OR to do some refresh of that space. And so, those meetings are underway, and again, we'll start construction likely in 2024 with that project. And then, currently, we're doing construction on our neurosurgery clinic. This is in the first floor of MOB 2. And this clinic is to support our new neurosurgeon, Dr. Vasudhavin. He is here and seeing patients currently in our pain management clinic, but this clinic will allow him to really develop a space where we can see the clients that need and the patients that need his services. And so, we are on track with the construction there to finish up later this year. All right. So, now, I will turn it over to Yasmin from HR.
Hi, everyone. I'm Yasmin Chitakone, and I'm the HR manager, and I am actually here to cover for Terry. And so, here's a clicker. I just want to go over some HR metrics and also to update you on what's going on in HR. And so, this slide here just shows a quick overview of the BJC workforce by the numbers, and I'm just going to highlight some things on this slide. So, as you can see, we have just a little bit over 30,000 employees, and 23% of that are staff RNs, and then about 81% are in a full-time positions. And then, of our individual contributors, we have 81% are female and then 31% are persons of color. And then, for our leaders, we have 75% are females and then 17% are persons of color. And then, for our employee tenure, as you can see, our highest employees there for 10 years is at 30% with our 10-plus-years employees. And then, 83% of our workforce are in three categories, specifically nursing, clinical, and support. And then, as far as our generational employees, as you can see, we have the millennials followed by Gen Xers as our most population. And then, just to review our employee experience survey that you all took a few months ago, and again, thank you for taking the time to take that survey. And so, I'm just going to go over real quick our BJC overall and Christian Hospital as well. And so, this is for BJC overall. We did have just over 14,000 respondents, which equals to about 46% of our population. And then, as far as highlighting our successes and opportunities, so our successes includes well-being, empowerment, and recognition. So, we did highlight that as a success because we were actually above the healthcare benchmark on that. And we also showed improvement on those scores from 2022. And then, for our opportunities, includes future vision, which answers the questions of, "I can see a clear link between my work and the company's objectives," and "BJC Senior Leadership communicates a clear vision for the future." And then, also, including engagement, where it answers the question of, "My work gives me a sense of personal accomplishment." So, those were included in the opportunities because we were just below the healthcare benchmark on that. And then, again, just for the top three things that we answered on how can we improve our workplace culture, the top three included increasing compensation, improvement of communication, and also rewarding our long-tenured employees. And then, as far as our overall scores, we had a 75% positivity score. And then, this is for Christian Hospital. Hopefully, you can see the numbers, but if not, the colors there, basically what it shows is the darker teal colored is the significant positive difference, and then the lighter teal is non-significant positive difference. So, this is in comparison from our scores in 2022. So, as you can see, you know, we have a lot of darker colors there, so just showing a lot of significant positive differences from 2022. And just to highlight our overall average, in 2022, we had 68, and we increased that this year to 74% positivity score. And then, this is also to highlight our nursing staff. And again, darker is good. Darker color is good. And so, to highlight this, our overall average, from 2022, we were at 62, and we had a significant increase of 76 overall. And just to highlight also, the last question there of, "The stress level is manageable." We had a significant increase of 26% from last year. And then, this slide, I know it's a lot of colors and numbers as well, but this is comparing ourselves, which is where you see the column of my filter, that's Christian Hospital. And we're comparing ourselves with BJC overall and the healthcare benchmark. And so, basically, what this is telling us is, on the darker colors and the light teal, we're pretty much in line, if not even above, BJC or the healthcare benchmark. Particularly, the two questions of, "My job makes good use of my skills and abilities." We actually were above BJC in the healthcare benchmark. And then, also, the question of, "My manager treats employees with respect." We were also above BJC in the healthcare benchmark. And then, but we do have a couple of opportunities, which is in the orange there. The question of, "BJC Senior Leadership communicates a clear vision for the future." We have some opportunities. And then, "The stress level is manageable." All right. So, as part of the BJC people priorities, we have formed a team in order to focus more on what we call the aggressive workforce pathways. So, what this is, is we want to develop a more robust academic community and internal pipelines for relevant positions to drive and focus on our recruitment efforts. We do want to start with particular roles, for targeted roles, particularly PCTs, MAs, surgical tacks, and CSPD. And just to give you a little bit more details on what the key strategies are for this workforce, we do want to increase the funnel by ongoing training cohorts for our PCTs, MAs, and CSPD. And we also want to expand our participation in high-need areas for, with the degree requirements for search tacks. And then, also, for creating an attractive offering, we are exploring what we can do as far as with the student statuses and also direct billing of our tuition reimbursement directly into the school and, you know, eliminating the middle person there. And also, we want to enhance our recruitment efforts by expanding our community partnership and enhancing our talent pipelines. And then, lastly, investing in our talent. And with that, we are creating a formalized career paths from our heart-of-the-house roles into targeted roles, basically offering new career tools, workforce readiness, technical skill building, job introduction, and job shadowing opportunities. And also, we are launching a six-month pilot in July with BJH Transport Department and assessing any expansion opportunities. All right. So, a couple of HR hub news, as you all know, if you have questions and concerns or anything like that, or specifically, you know, if you have questions about payroll benefits and so forth, you would go to the HR hub. And so, just, we do, we did add, we are adding, or we did add, sorry, a couple of features in the HR hub. This first one is with, it says, "Connect with an HR A&amp;C expert." So, A&amp;C starts for advice and counsel. So, excuse me. Basically, if you have any workplace concerns or conflicts in a workplace, so you would go to the HR hub and you would be connected with our advice and counsel experts, or we also call them our employee relations partners. And then, the other feature is for accommodation requests. So, if you have a workplace accommodation request, historically, you had to go through Lincoln Financial to submit that request. Now, you can go to the HR hub to make that request. And then, we do have what we call our ADA team that will work with you, directly with you, as well as your leader, and better understand what your workplace accommodation needs And then, just to let you know, if you haven't seen it already, this was added on your transcript for our annual compliance. So, for, this is a new module on workplace violence prevention and response training, which is due by 11:30. And then, just lastly, I just want to remind you all that BJCEAP is available to you free of charge, and that also is available for your immediate family. So, if you, you know, need any type of one-on-one counseling of that sort, that is available for you.
I'm Pooja Vias. I'm the Chief Medical Officer here at Christian. I'm going to talk to you guys about clinical quality. So, you may have seen our Clinical Excellence Scorecard. It lists out everything that we look at when we're looking at quality at the hospital. These are the different categories, and I have here our scores for April and May. In April, we were 102.47 out of 100, and in May, we were 109.83 out of 100. 100 is our target, and the maximum points we can get is 150. So, we're doing excellent, and I anticipate we'll continue to increase that score by the end of the year. Hopefully, we can reach 150. Last year, if you remember, we were not meeting green, and we were much lower. And so, this is a great accomplishment, and we should all be celebrating. Now, the things that we look at specifically are our mortality score, HCAPs, which is patient satisfaction, readmission scores, our safety, hospital-acquired infections, and our safety with preventable harms. Mortality score really depends on how well we're documenting. It goes to how sick our patients actually are. And what we look at is not just their diagnoses, but also the conversations that we have with the family members. So, if a patient is at the end of life and palliative care is involved, hospice is an opportunity for them, and we also look at those opportunities for our patients. And those patients that go on hospice are not a part of that score. HCAPs, Lori is going to talk a little bit more about this. Readmissions, so we look at our patients that have been admitted and come back for something that was preventable. So, when they first came in, if they came in for one diagnosis and we were able to solve that, but then they come back within 30 days for something completely different, maybe that wasn't preventable. But if they do come back for something that was preventable, we like to take a look at those cases, dig deeper into it, and try to understand what it is that we could do differently to prevent that readmission from occurring. We've been doing a lot of work in this field, and we've made a big difference here. And we have our CHAP program that's dedicating a lot of their time to our high utilizers, patients that have been here for, that keep coming back to the ED or get admitted for multiple reasons, multiple times, trying to see what it is that we can get them in the community so that they don't have to be admitted each time when they need medical care. Hospital-acquired infections include our infections related to things that occur in the hospital. So, if they have a foreign object like an IV line or a Foley catheter, making sure that we're taking care of those and that's not the source of infection. C. diff diarrhea is another one. And then, with preventable harm, we look at our pressure ulcers, falls that occur in the hospital, things like that, making sure that our teams are doing what they need to do to prevent these from occurring so that it's a safe place for our patients and we can upkeep our quality. Giving it over to Lori.
I'm Lori Rutherford, the Chief Nursing Officer. So, to follow up behind Dr. Vias on HCAPs, these are the domains that drive the score that you see of 27.64. We're doing a lot of great work here. It takes the entire hospital to drive these scores, so we should be celebrating this. The main one to focus on is care transition. That involves everyone from EBS, dietary, the EDs, education. We all impact care transition, and we're at 51.21, getting seven points. So, there's more that we can do there. Cleanliness and quietness, we are scoring well with nine. We have an opportunity with our discharge information. We're achieving five points. And again, that is really around nurse communication, physician communication, all as we try to get the patients out of the hospital safely. And then, our overall rating is 64.32, where we're achieving 10 points there, but still an opportunity to do better. And responsiveness of staff, that is answering the call lights. If you walk by, there's a light going off, how we impact there. And our medicine communication at 63.6. So, it's on a rolling 12-month score, so we have an opportunity. Our target is 23. We're at 27, but we can absolutely go much higher than that. So, that is our goal there for our Clinical Excellence Scorecard. Our other card that we are held accountable to is our Patient Experience Net Promoter Score. We're at 71.8. As you can see, last year at this time, we were 66.3. So, we've made a huge impact, and we've actually passed the max that we were given of 70.3. So, you can see where we were red, and we have moved up to the blue threshold there, and we're doing well, and we can also get even better there. So, for Net Promoter Score, this is the Patient Experience Dashboard. And how you get to, actually, the Net Promoter Score, are your promoters are your 9s and 10s, and your detractors are like your 0 to 6. So, the goal is to move the ones in between to the promoter. When you subtract the two, that's how you actually come up with the Net Promoter Score. And it is based off one question, and it's, "Would you recommend Christian Hospital to your family or friends?" And that drives the score. As you can see, the emergency room, inpatient, the outpatient, continuing treatment, surgery, and treat-to-test, those are all the scores that make up the Net Promoter Score as a whole. You can drill down on Patient Experience Dashboard any way that you'd like to see it. I currently have it drilled down by the age population of 65 to 74 is the average age of our clients. Our patient experience for inpatient is the units there. HCAPs other is really the step-down unit, and the ninth floor is leading the way for inpatient at 69.9. So, the nursing career ladder is what we are focused on in nursing right now to drive recruitment and retention in our, and BJC as a whole. So, this is, we're in Phase 1, where we're actually doing the assessment. This career ladder replaces the former PNDP, which was an optional program for nurses to participate in, to work at the top of their license and also be recognized for all the hard work they're doing with obtaining multiple certifications or degrees. So, now, with our career ladder, every nurse is included, and we are in the assessment stage, and that goes until August 11. And it shows you right here. It doesn't close August 4th anymore. It's actually August 11 to give us more time. We validate August 18. The committee on the 29th, we will review all the assessments that we receive to see where everybody fits in, and you will see a significant increase in the pay depending on your competency and where you are on the career ladder. And our goal live is scheduled for October 22.
My name is Nicole Chung, and I'm the Executive Director for Christian Hospital's Foundation and recently, Community Engagement Team. So, our responsibilities are to So our responsibilities are to accept gifts on behalf of the hospital, fundraise, manage the hospital volunteer program, the gift shop, and also provide community benefit. So my small but mighty team, we all feel that we're all connected in health. So what our mission is, is to build healthy communities through collaboration and investment. Our end goal is to build hope, health, and wellness in the areas that Christian Hospital serves. So to accomplish that, our strategy is to build a community of philanthropy right here in our hospital, and also outside the hospital with walls. To do that, we need to understand what the needs of our patients are, as well as our community that we serve. The importance to that is, if we don't understand, we can't connect people's philanthropic passions to the needs of the hospital. And that's always our goal, through investment. So, community benefit. Within our mission, we're dedicated to providing our community with needed funding. We focus a lot in the areas of access to care. And with that, we provide our communities with activities, such as the most recent Summer Health Expo. We had 400 participants that showed up, and they received screenings and met with physicians, and a roundtable discussion, I should say. We also provide diabetic starter kits for patients who have been recently diagnosed. We provide free mammograms and many other services. Transportation, well, our community, many of them have transportation problems, and it's hard for them to be compliant with their follow-up appointments, especially if they have large wounds or they had a major surgery. So we provide, last year and this year, approximately $92,000 to support that need. Our men's to beds program, all of the statistics show that if a patient leaves with their medicine at hand, more than likely, they'll be more successful with their outcomes. Education and wellness, we also support that. We provide scholarships to help build the pipeline of healthcare workers. So we give scholarships to high school students who have an interest in becoming a healthcare professional. I wanted to share with you also some of our upcoming activities. Our Give the Gift of Health campaign is going on right now, right this moment. This is our employee giving campaign. We're very, very grateful for all of you who have supported the program. And for those of you who have not, I just want to talk to you about the importance of it. So as we're out meeting people, asking them to support some of our need, the question often comes up, what's your participation rate with employee giving? I think the mindset is, why should we invest if your own aren't supporting the programs that you value? And that's a very good question. So I'd like to thank you all for supporting it and tell you it's not too late. We have a number of other activities. Our Adventures in Healthcare program is going on right now. Rita Johnson is in charge of that program. As mentioned, we're very dedicated to building that next pipeline of hospital, or healthcare professionals. We've got our awards program coming up. In August, our community benefit grant cycle will open. I strongly encourage you to apply for a grant if you need it. We've got a shoe sale sponsored by our lovely auxiliary, the 22nd and 23rd of August. And then our Hill and Garden, which is beautiful. We'll do ribbon cutting in September for that. Trip, we have a travel program. If you didn't know, they're going to Albuquerque this year. If you can't make this trip, be on the lookout for others. Proceeds help to benefit our auxiliary and all of the wonderful things that they sponsor. We've got a designer per sale in October and our gala. It's on October 14. I hope all of you will be able to participate in that, either volunteer or buy a ticket and come out and support it. It's a really good time, and it's, all dollars are supporting a very worthy cause. Forever Thank You Medicine is the last event I wanted to share with you, and it's taking place on October 26. More details to come on that. Again, thank you all so much for your support of the foundation. Every dollar you give to us, you invest. I can assure you, it will support the cause that you designate your dollars to. Thank you.
All questions that have been asked for the town hall this week will be compiled by Brett Barrigan, and Brett will send out all the questions and answers next week sometime. So with that, thank you all for your time today. Thank you for coming out.